All major new budget agents. Chief Webb, Elias. Unplacably, they just seem to rely on the United States of America. Considered a relic which stands. One action under God indivisible, but never be.
Justin?
Here.
Jamie? Jack?
Here.
Jessica?
President.
Matthew?
Here.
Shai?
Here.
Next item on agenda is approval minutes December tenth, two thousand twenty-four. Anybody got any corrections? Comments? Sir, I have a minute minutes. Justin makes motion.
Second.
Jack second.
Justin?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Shai?
Yes.
Next item on agenda is public comment. Anybody in public got anything? Close the comment. Next item on agenda is department and committee reports. I know Chief Wind has got some things he wants to talk to you guys about.
Evening, Council. Just to kind of recap on two thousand twenty-four. We ended the year with four hundred and fifty-three calls on the year. That's a record year for our fire department. The closest we've come to that was two years ago at four hundred and twenty-six. But some updates on some things going around. Our station floors that were approved on the capital improvements budget have been completed. They were a significant improvement to the appearance of our station. So we're thankful for that. We've had our annual hose ladder and annual hose and ladder testing done. And our services have been completed for the year. One thing I'd like to talk about to bring your attention is another item on the capital improvement list with our garage door improvements. They. The quote came in significantly higher than what was given to me last year whenever I built the quotes for it. And essentially what I'd like to do to be able to continue to to replace those because we have several doors that are on their last leg. A lot of the framework is loose and starting to come apart. I'd like to take the refinish the bay floors line item and potentially move it to two thousand twenty-six and use those funds to apply towards the garage doors to make up the difference in that quote. The doors that we had originally had quoted to us were plastic backing on the inside and uninsulated glass. And the doors that we're currently able to go with are this steel backing, a little better built door. And they have insulated glass, which will help us in the inside debate, keeping that regulated temperature wise. I've gone through three different companies to get three different quotes. And the lowest one that I've got is the one that's eighty-six hundred above what was originally quoted for us last year. So I was seeking your blessing on kind of reallocating some of those funds from one line item to the next.
So the quote you got last year that that supplier contracted went on to our book?
Um, he, no. He, the glass prices is what he said was the biggest difference. He's like glass for whatever reason more than doubled. And this isn't even the company, the company that I'm going with isn't even the one that gave us the original quote.
Windows that we put in, Justin. In December, middle part of December, they all sudden, I mean, we got the call from Spire. I said, hey, the windows are doubling next Monday. So if the people wants the windows that you've quoted, they need to file right now.
So how much is the proposed price for these, for the overall quote for these doors and things?
Thirty-four thousand, one hundred dollars.
That's thirty-four four on the sheet.
Should be thirty-four one.
That's since you're editing the cell phone invite, moving other projects to put that all in here.
Yes, yes. And there's some, there's a kind of another avenue that we're going to apply for the rural development grant for our air packs again this year. And that would kind of help eat some of that paper and if we were to get that grant, but it's sort of guaranteed. So.
I appreciate the fact you're trying to stay within your budget and find, you know, a solution for it. I probably spent a vote on this. I'm doing it or just, you just ask, just asking a blessing.
Ben, you want to, yeah, yeah, going on. If you want to, Justin, I mean, we support the movement of line four, finish bay fours, twelve thousand hours, twenty-two six in an effort to maintain the budget one forty-four to support the change. Your price.
Justin makes motion.
Second.
Jack seconds.
Justin?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Shai?
Yes.
Thank you, Council.
Chief, you have one more thing you want to report about them or sending somebody to an elite conference? Is that yourself or somebody else?
Uh, no, it's actually our training division chief Brad Harris. He's gonna go over there and take some classes and pretty excited about that. So.
Good.
So we've also got our chili supper coming up on March eighth. Hope to see y'all if you're there. Starting at four o'clock.
I actually have one other question. That first, you know, fifty-three calls is that, do you have any kind of like insight as to what's driving the, uh, the fact that our town exploded in residents? Is it just back to more residents or was there more emergency situations this year than others that create this?
Uh, a lot of it is traffic incidents, which goes hand in hand with the increased population. But traffic incidents and medical calls. So the, the population is a, is a driver behind all. Also having drought conditions and things like that. So.
Are we staffed to do it again this year?
So far, yes. Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, I have one more question. Sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
For the grants, do you work with anybody to help find different types of grants that you can apply for?
Um, yes, ma'am. We've worked with Cassie in the past. She actually, they helped us get last year's rural development grant. And there's some private companies that do it like Firehouse Subs. Those are kind of widely known across the fire service.
There was one that came up at the municipal conference in January that I wanted to bring to your attention. I don't know if we need to do it openly now or if you and I just want to have a one-off conversation, maybe present that to Cassie.
Okay.
I think it would be helpful.
Sounds great. Thank you.
I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, good evening, Council. Uh, just a little update. We made for our first snow with no incident. I think the only incident was it's one of the snow plows took out the mayor's mailbox at his house. But, uh, yeah. Uh, road improvements have pretty much come to the halt just for the fact that the grounds are frozen. Really doesn't make much sense to get a grader out on there. Uh, stocked up on gravel. Everything seems to be moving around along. The issue with the water bills, I don't know if you guys saw that on Facebook. That's good. So we moved our re-dates from the first to the first because that's when we get built from our supplier is the first to the first. So in order to get an accurate count on water loss, we kind of had to do apples to apples and not one just to one just. Or apples to oranges. So we moved the re-date to the first, which left the last billing period from December fifteenth to January second. So when everybody saw the smaller bill, first there was the, you know, of course, what's wrong with my bill? And then second, oh, my next bill is going to be humongous. The next bill is just going to be a regular building period. So there shouldn't be any offsets. Uh, I hope people took advantage of the shorter bill. I'll just pay more to try to catch up on some of the accounts that are.
What's your, what's your difference between your water loss from the way you was billing to the new one?
So average over the last six months, our water loss is between eighteen and twenty-two percent. Just this last month, reading on first and the first, we got it down to two point eight percent water. So that's what we paid for water compared to what we metered or billing people. So two point eight percent is, is kudos to, to our department and the billing utility billing force. So. I really don't have much else. If you guys have any questions for me, concerns, comments. Thanks, guys. It's great.
Thank you.
Yeah, the department heads going on. Council, anything for any other department heads? Next item on agenda is new business. Review of council meeting procedures. So this is the new format. I wanted you guys to see our procedures. This is the format that we're supposed to be, uh, that was approved way back when. I don't really, the only thing I don't like about it is I like the department head reports to be down under new business. And if you guys are okay with that, I'd like to change that to where department head reports are down on their new business. The reason for that is we have a rezone or something like that. And it's a big controversy thing. I like them people to be able to be heard first, you know, and they can get in and get out. So that way it encourages more participation in our council meetings. So they don't have to wait forever just to hear that one subject.
I'm a lot of that. It's a lot of citizens weren't option to speak.
What's that?
It's a lot of the citizens weren't option to speak.
Yes.
So I think that's valuable. I agree. Why do I have to vote for that as well?
Do we need to vote on that one, Jay, or just break them?
No, they need to vote to approve it as, as modified per your recommendation.
Do you guys see anything else that you'd like to see changed to the, the format of this?
No, we can, I will move to approve based on your recommendation.
Jessica makes motion.
I'll second.
Matt seconds.
Justin?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Jessica? Yes. Matthew?
Yes.
Shai?
Yes.
Thanks, Council. Next item on agenda is resolution number two zero two five dash one. Resolution adopting and amended subject resolution for the city of Popple, Arkansas, or two thousand twenty-four. So if you guys look at the budget here, our auditor come in, the city audit come in the other day, and every time we get a new auditor, they want us to change how we do things. And I started asking like, is this a state law? Because every auditor we get wants us to change it to the way they want. And it's really frustrating. So this part I'm about to tell you is a state law, but I guarantee you when we get another audit in two years, they'll change how they want us to do it. And that's, that's the irritating part of it. So uh, we, which we do, and, and we do do it. Uh, they want us to show everything, grants, uh, money that we move into savings, all that, which I told her that we do that in our financials, like the council sees all that. And which that's not good enough for her. She wanted it shown at the end of the year budget. So, uh, take like the, the administration side. If you take, uh, the difference on your expenditure on the, on the final two thousand twenty-four budget, it's seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars versus what you guys approved, the seven hundred and forty-four. That difference is, is the mid-year is the bonuses for the end of the year. So that's on that. And on the fire department side, we had to add in their, their grants. So you're going to see that difference on your expenditure sides. And then on license permit was fine. On the park side of us is the, uh, the difference on the expenditure side of seventy-three, eight twenty versus what you guys approved at forty-two, sixteen was the Walton Family tree green. That got spent for the trees. And then on the fleet side, it's the, the, uh, the district court income increase. So that's an in and out on both the in-class nine and the expenditure side. So the difference on the expenditure side is the increase of the district court income. And then it goes through the Fire Act, eight thirty-three, the Police Act, nine eighty-eight. Uh, so she just wants us to, to show all of our accounts in this, which is perfectly fine. I mean, don't have a problem with that. But the way we showed it to you in the past for her wasn't the way she wanted it done. So for right now, this is how you'll see it coming, coming every year. Council got any questions?
No questions.
There's the ARPA fund there in there as well. That's that money we got for the sewer line and NACA. Just need a motion to approve. The council don't have any other questions.
I'm making a motion to, Jack makes a motion.
Second.
Justin?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Shai?
Yes.
Next item on agenda is resolution number two zero two five dash two. Resolution to establish policies and procedures for electronic fund transfers. So the councils previously authorized the electronic fund transfers. This just spells out exactly how those procedures need to work. Council, any questions?
Is the why behind it? There was, was needed to have a documented process or something was concerned?
No, the statute, the statute says we should spell out the procedures.
Okay. Fair. I believe we approved.
Justin makes motion.
I'll second.
Just for a second.
Justin?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Shai?
Yes.
Next item on agenda is approval of December twenty twenty-four financial report. This will be the first set there.
That's just because we didn't have the meeting in January.
Any questions or concerns on the council?
I like the motion to approve.
Justin makes motion.
I'll second.
Justin goes second. Though Shai or Matt. Uh, Matt does second.
Justin?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Shai?
Yes.
Next item on agenda is approval of the January twenty twenty-five financial report.
Mayor, I have a question on the financial reports. I know at one point we were talking about trying to understand from the state or another body regarding taxes and, and the liquor tax that we're, we're getting or receiving through the airport. Have we, was there any progress on that?
Yeah. So actually we got today, we got a phone call from the state on that. Tiffany, I'm going to talk about that.
So today I got a phone call from DFA trying to find out if the airport was still inside our city limits. And then they wanted a copy of our ordinances for our own calls cells so that way they can look into the situation.
But that was, uh, it was just right before the meeting, about four o'clock. I got that phone call there.
Oh, nice. So did they give a timeline on when they might have some answers for us?
Uh, no, she said she'll let me know if she needs anything else.
All right. Thank you, Tiffany.
There was no payment on liquor tax for twentieth of December, but there is one for January twenty twenty-five. So what? Zero sales in December. And the chart there says, no.
That's what we're hoping to find out from them. We didn't get anything from them.
For December, but we did for January?
Yeah, we got El Capelitos.
Oh, El Capelito came in for, for January. Got it. We know there were liquor sales in December in the airport. So something is not making sense.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, the franchise fees. Uh, we'll reach out and see if they want a report of our city addresses or if they've got a report of of their who they think is in our city. Uh, so we can look over that and match it to make sure everybody of the franchise side, the franchise tax partners this year and for last year went down a couple thousand dollars. When the previous six years it's been increasing and with our growth and stuff, it shouldn't be decreasing.
Tim, do they happen to say why they have us in interest in helping us with this? It's good.
One, one step at a time. Any other questions on January's financials?
That for me? I'm moving past January finances.
Justin makes motion of pass. January's financials.
Second.
I second.
Justin?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Jessica?
I, I need a second. I'm sorry. I was looking at something. Um, yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Shai?
Yes.
Next item on agenda is approval of the twenty twenty-four asset list. Uh, this list, three pages long here, is everything that we have in the city and anything over what's the price tag on that day, the twenty-five hundred dollars?
Two thousand.
Two thousand. Anything over two thousand dollars the city has, it has to have an asset list. So we do this every year, uh, just so happened we was compiling it and getting together as the auditor come in, they, they wanted a copy of it as well. So does anybody got any questions? I think there's some of this stuff on this asset list Dustin and his crew is working on to get your guys' approval to set auction or whatever, however it needs to be done. Back any questions on asset list? No questions or comments. So just made a motion to approve.
We're at three million dollars plus in assets. We had four million beginning and we ended with seven point three. So we bought four million dollars for the stock this year. Three million dollars for the stock.
So that began, Justin?
We bought, this is, am I reading this right? Beginning balance is three point nine million. Ending balance is three, seven point three. So essentially we bought three billion dollars worth of assets this year.
I think majority of that is going to be NACA lines, Justin. There's sewer lines.
Okay, thanks. I was just trying to figure out what, what we bought was.
Liberty Myers going one, that's going one.
All right, thank you.
This is our he's man, I mean, the favorite side.
Yeah. There's no group meeting on that. It's just a report. Is that right?
No, we didn't approve it.
We did approve the assets. We approved the asset list.
Justin makes motion.
I'll second.
Jessica seconds.
Justin?
Yes.
Jack?
Yeah.
Jessica?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Shai?
Yes.
Next item, mayor's report. So, uh, Jamie, due to work, she got a promotion, new job. She's traveling a lot and then with family and stuff, she is resigning her position. As her council seat. Jamie has been up here as a council member for six, around six years, a little bit over. Uh, she's done an excellent job. Really going to miss her, having her up here. She really believed in making sure every citizen had a voice, you know, something that I believe helped our being and that every citizen should be able to be listened to and heard. You know, so, uh, that valuable asset is going to be missed. So with that being said, you gotta see Jamie, reach out there, whatever, tell her thank you for her, her dedication and her, her time that she spent up for doing this job. But we will, uh, we'll put it out tomorrow that we have an open spot in that ward and that they need to have their applications up here by the next council meeting.
She'll be missed.
Will be missed. Will be missed. Uh, so last month or not last month, so, uh, end of last year, you guys gave Chief Win the, uh, uh, blessing to donate the, the old Cascade system to Heinzville Rural Fire Department. They wrote a very nice letter. Uh, you guys got it on your stuff?
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure you guys were, you know, appreciated for that. I thought that was a very nice letter that they wrote. Uh, that goes to a good thing. I mean, every volunteer fire department goes through that stage where it's just hard to, hard to make ends meet. So, and, uh, sometimes we have to help each other out. Council, I appreciate it. I know they appreciate it. So. So the lawsuit with, can I talk about? So the lawsuit with Tyler Bruder that was being taken care of, you guys approved all that. Takes a little time to work all the strings out of that one, but it's officially over with. So. And at this month's planning commission meeting is we're going to have Juliette Ritchie with Garber. She's going to be up there in introductory with the planning commission, uh, talk about what she's getting ready to start doing, participation she wants from planning commission and what all they're going to be doing there. So uh, want you guys to come to planning commission meeting if you can. Uh, if you can't, you know, zoom into it, you see a citizen telling them to come up here. It's like I said, this one is just more of, of in, in introductory and, uh, kind of give the, the citizens, if they show up, a, a direction of which way we're going to be, you know, how. You know, how how it's gonna be proceeding, because we're gonna have lots of uh. Uh, the public meetings on this, so I have Justin and myself and. Jeremy are meeting with her Thursday, uh, to kind of get the ball rolling on this whole whole thing, so. Hopefully this will start kicking off pretty quickly before the, so that's exciting. City Hall will be closed Monday, February seventeenth to their president's day. The planning commission meeting is Tuesday, February twenty-fifth.
What time is six?
Six o'clock, yes, ma'am. Cody already touched on it, but the the fire department's having their annual chili supper, uh, pie auction, March the eighth, start at four. Auction start at five, correct, chief?
Yes, sir.
Uh, so if you guys aren't able to make it, uh. If you guys have time to bake some cookies or a pie, don't have to be just a pie, it can be cookies, it can be a cake. It can be whatever, I think one of our pies last year went for a record twenty-six hundred dollars.
Hey.
Uh, so we got some really good communities, the community really loves the fire department here. So it's a fun time, everybody hangs out and talks and has a good time, uh. March city council meeting is Tuesday, March eleventh, six. As council guys, that's all I got on the mayor's stuff, council got any? Comments? Discussion? Jessica, you have some?
I did, I did wanna bring up, um. Opening of a line on the AT&T bill for Tiffany, she's department head, um. She needs a phone for the work that she puts in, um. The the great work that she puts in for us, so I think it's time. Um, that she retires using her personal cell phone for work use. I would like to present that. Um, just what we saw when we were at the municipal league together, the amount of work that she does on her personal phone is a lot, it's a lot. So I think she she deserves a work line.
I mean, there's a, there's so much on that budget, but I mean, I'd be admitted that if you're probably to. Had that, you know, that's the, council wants to say that, uh, we can pursue that and then end it, you know. Can I just pull the justice and say?
I think it's a good idea, uh, if you guys are good with it, we'll pursue it.
Or was you saying like, we would just do like a forty dollar, fifty dollar credit per month?
No, no, we would just buy her own.
Buy you buy a separate bonus paper for the city, that's how you guys do it.
Has a city email on it, all that, it would be, it'd be a city phone.
Yeah, so. Okay. The reason that's what most employers, there's a tax, there's their tax liability to an employee if you pay the type, pay like a fifty dollar stipend or whatever, call it a month.
Well, the other thing we have to consider though is FOIA, so if it's on her person, she has information on her personal phone, does that affect her there?
Yes, yes.
It's FOIable. If I have a city phone and a personal phone and I do receive. There's a city tax on my personal phone, it's still subject to FOIA.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so if we completely separate it, then.
Yeah, I think for her, we'd do the best just to do her own separate city phone.
Right, it's not a device plus monthly fees, you know, we're taking five hundred bucks, and we gotta make our bills together, you know?
Yeah, I know, like, we've got plans, you know, so we can just, uh, we can talk to our provider and see what kind of plan we can get on, so, so. You guys are good with it, I just. No emotion there. Just me finding that, Jack? Shy?
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Uh, anybody else, any other council members?
Yeah, Mayor, we have a new POA board uh in Silver Meadows, and probably wanna have a little meeting with uh. With you or with council at one point, so just a heads up on that.
And speaking of that, we will be reapplying for that uh grant for sidewalks up there. And the grant for the park up there as well.
Perfect.
So, uh.
Awesome.
Brush painters will, I'll talk to Cassie today, so we'll be replying for both. Both of them, so hopefully we can actually get them this time.
Mayor, any, a- anything on on Vaughn Road and then that intersection, I know Vaughn Road, I, most of it is, or. Going towards Benaville, most of it is not ours, and that intersection is definitely not within our city limits, but anything you're hearing about any work to. To widen those roads or fix that intersection?
I don't know how they curved it out.
So right there at Vaughn and Mason Valley, you talking about, Shy?
No, I think he's talking about.
Uh, yeah, Vaughn and. And airport, and regional airport. The seventeen-way stop.
Oh, the seventeen, okay. So I I I heard, it's been a few years ago, but I heard that Benaville was gonna put in, I was working on a roundabout.
But we haven't heard any updated information on it?
Uh, I have not, no, I haven't.
Can the semis get through roundabouts?
Uh, yeah. Yeah, they make it big.
Carefully?
They make it big enough, well, one twelve is gonna have, I forgot how many roundabouts in it.
Okay.
You know, so coming from Bayville all the way to Benaville, so.
But but nothing more concrete or more recent than that?
No, sorry.
Okay.
But if I hear something, I will, I will bring it to your guys' attention, you know?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else from council? I just stated a motion to adjourn. I make a motion to adjourn, Matt, next motion?
I'll second it.
Justin?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Jessica? Yes. Matthew?
Yes.
Shy?
Yes.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it.